All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order if we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Ms. Lehman?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Nally?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here. And again, a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting held July 28th, 2025, please.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. Uh, moving on to legislative report, done.
I have nothing this evening.
All right, um, moving on, we do have one walk-on item.
That is correct, um, Mr. Price, thank you, I've placed those at your seats. The attachment as well as the item, um, it will become number 10 under staff and then we will renumber the two, um, items under treasure.
All right, moving on to hearing of the public, if anybody would like to address the board, they can come up to the podium, just state your name and address for records purpose. And you can, uh, say anything you want to in front of the board, so.
Hi, I'm Rosie Vensel, 1124 Hamlin Street here in Fremont, and with me is my daughter Emily. I want to address the board tonight regarding open, uh, enrollment for the intra-district policy. But before I do, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up outside of Fremont and graduated from Ross and shortly after graduating left Fremont with no idea that I'd ever return. In the fall of 2022, my husband and I took jobs at Fremont Alliance and that brought us back here with our four girls in tow. Um, in a world where there's so many uncertainties, we weren't sure what we would do in regards to our school, our girls and school. Um, but we decided with, oh, looking at the schools in the district, um, that because also that the church had a established relationship with Otis. And their standing within the district, um, as being one of the better schools in our district, that we would open and enroll our, our oldest there. Our hope in being here in Fremont was to establish relationships, um, and build community, especially, um, inside of the open and inside of the Otis district. Unfortunately, in a town that has a 98% uh, occupancy rate, we were unable to find, um, routes inside of the Otis district. And right now we rent right on the line of Otis-Krogen district. Our girls are now entering fourth and second grade, unsure of what the future holds. I want you board members to understand that I do understand that intra-district open enrollment is a year-to-year thing. And that being able to attend the elementary I'd like my girls to attend is always something that I can't always count on. With that being said, let me take you back to Wednesday, July 30th with me. I, like many families who applied for intra-district open enrollment, received this email or something similar. Which stated, "This email confirms that your students, Emily and Ashlyn, enrolled to Krogen Elementary for the 25-26 school year. Your students will attend their home district of Krogen Elementary." That's it. "In previous years, I was notified via a letter about open enrollment, so I was confused by this and I called our district office looking for more information." "I was told by the administrative assistant that, quote, 'even, this was to even class sizes out in each of the schools.'" "I asked if we would be receiving further info and what we could do as parents in the meantime." "She put me on a brief hold and said that we could put our girls on a waiting list for Otis." "The following day, I received a call from the district office with the same information." "At this point, I was confused and upset by the lack of communication." "So I set out to inform myself on the district's policies regarding the intra-district open enrollment." "I also emailed our superintendent and explained that receiving an email stating your children are enrolled in a different school with no further explanation was very frustrating." "To which I was replied back with, um, that although their means of communication has changed, that they didn't even really need to let us know about this decision until August." "It was July 30th I received this email." "It was stated that we must keep educational opportunities open for students who reside in each particular residential area." "Again, I've read over the district's policy for intra-district open enrollment and I do understand that class size and building numbers all play a role in the decision to allow intra-district open enrollment." "I've also read of the information regarding these policies put out by the state and I've spoken with our regional representative with the state." "After reading through these policies and speaking with our regional representatives, I once again emailed our superintendent to ask "if she could provide the criteria the district used to make such a widespread decision to send most of our intra-district students back to their homeschool." "Or to the Department of Education, this is a question the district should have been able to answer." "The super superintendent's response was, 'I'll have a registration and send you the district policies.'" "I never received those." "So my question is, if this is truly a numbers game regarding our students, "if there are building limits or classroom limits that are being listed as the reason for this widespread uprooting of students, then can you please explain those?" "When I, when I asked for clarification from our district representative about this, he said if the numbers like this were used, "that the district must have those outlined as part of their district policy regarding intra-district open enrollment." "So I guess I'm asking, are those numbers a part of the district's policy?" "Because according, according to Department of Education, these are the reasons a student can be denied open enrollment." "And those are, um, being refused due to a racial balance or classroom and building or grade capacity, "provided that the district has those defined capacity limits in their open enrollment policy." "So I guess I'm here tonight for a clear explanation from all of you on this matter." "Because at this point, uprooting my kids from the highest performing school in our district "and being asked to send them to one of the poorest performing schools in our district, there has to be a clear answer that falls under your policy." "Brought my oldest with me tonight, not just so that you had a face to go with all the numbers that of uprooted students affected by this, "but so that she can see that when faced with those in authority making decisions that affect you, "that there is a healthy and respectful way to go about challenging said authority "and that we, we and she have a voice in a decision that affects us."
Thank you, um, we will be sure that the district follows up with you with any information that you would need. Um, and that we could be required to give to parents, so, um, Denise, if you can make sure that you get back with Mrs. Vensel. She can outline all the policies and numbers and everything for you to get that in.
Are there established numbers? In your, in your district policy? I don't know if that's something.
Can I? So, one, one thing that I just want to make sure that we are speaking all the same language. Um, you referred to open enrollment and you've referred to a capacity number. Open enrollment is different than intra-district. And so we're talking about, actually, that's two different policies, two different sets of law, two different components.
So yeah, intra, intra-district, meaning our kids open enrolling intra-district. I understand that that's different than inter-district open enrollment.
So there's inter-district, intra-district, and open enrollment. So I just want to make sure that we are talking about all of the same things, so if, Rosie, if you're comfortable, I can give you a call, we can
Sure.
schedule something, if have you come in and we can sit down and look at that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else like to address the board? And we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Price, good evening, board members. Just a quick update and one to be able to share with our families, um, in case they have not seen on our district website, uh, on our master calendar. Just wanted to run through some of the open houses that are coming up. So we have August 19th at 5 o'clock, grades seven and eight. August 20th at 5 o'clock, grade six. On August 21st at 4 o'clock, we have grades one through five. Starting at 4 o'clock, we also have grade nine, so they have a time just by themselves at the high school. And then, starting at 5:30 on the 21st, grades 10 through 12, or any new students that would be joining the building, um, coming new to those grade levels and would want to get familiar with the building. Then, starting in that next week, once school gets started, because remember, we fluctuate our kindergarten start date. So on the 26th, which is the new, the first day of school for some of our students, um, at 4 o'clock, our kindergarteners will be invited into the building to have open house before they start, um, their days coming up later that week. So truly, we want to make sure that our students and our families are comfortable in their buildings. That they have an opportunity to see their classrooms, meet their individuals that are going to be with them this year. Um, and spend some time there before the actual first day of school. So all of those dates are on our master calendar on the district website, and I just wanted to take a moment to be able to share those. Along those same lines, just, we have lots of last-minute preparation that is taking place in the district. Um, all of our administrators are in, um, they spent three days last week, um, getting up to speed and, and having some time to reflect on some things and learn from some things from last year. As well as prepare for things for this year, so we're very excited. As the leader of our district, it is thrilling to sit in a room with the administrative team and see them gel so well and to have the blessing of all of them returning. We have no new administrative body this year and that is just a really, really good thing when I look across those six buildings and see those individuals that are all there. And we've had a lot of new staff, teaching staff and, um, support staff come our way and, um, even some from other districts, neighboring districts, um, that are making the choice to be a part of Fremont City Schools. And that's just an exciting place to be in the front of the school year, so I just wanted to share that with you as well. Um, that is all I have for this evening, if you're okay, I'll continue.
Yep, moving on to the recommendations.
Thank you, um, item number one, I would, would ask the approval to purchase, um, this is actually for two school buses. That we will be using this year, we would like to add to our fleet.
Can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second, um, that, Sarah? Okay, sorry.
All good.
Uh, second by Ms. Lewis, could I have, uh?
Would you like me to do a roll call?
This is a hot mess, isn't it? Item one, here we go, it's all Bob's fault. It's because Bob's in the audience, Mr. Gross, you need to leave, man. I know it, I know it. Any discussion on item one, please?
So we have those items that bus older already budgeted for.
Already budgeted for, yes, um, last year during the school year, um, Mr. Anway, our Director of Facility and Operations, Ms. Parkersta and myself, um, sat down and met and we actually created a multi-year, um, cycle, um, for the purchasing of those items for transportation. We had sort of been off that cycle and we had not purchased. So we actually sat down and decided how many we will purchase in the next couple of years and even the funding of where those would come from and what that would look like. So yeah, I feel very confident that, um, those dollars are set aside, we've budgeted for them and, and I think by, by getting back to that cycle, we will be in a much better place, um, with our entire fleet.
I think that's very important, you know, that we have, have that, that plan for the future, whether it's one bus or two buses. Whatever we can, you know, afford.
Correct.
And, and try to weed out some of the, you know, the older buses and that all, all makes sense, so. I just also wanted the public to understand that, you know, th- those buses are expensive and it's something that really has to be planned for, for the future.
Absolutely, to the point, Mr. Nally, um, we are on our schedule, we are hoping to purchase four buses this year. But even again, making sure that we're very thoughtful in that timeframe and you'll see two at the start of the school year and two later in the school year, um, just to be able to space those out appropriately.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you, um, and item number two, we start with some resignations. And I know that you'll, you'll see a couple of bus drivers here, um, and I know that, that, that is a sad moment sometimes because we try so hard to keep our bus drivers on, um, schedule with us. Just to know that those two bus drivers, um, you will see them later in the agenda, that they are requesting, they, they just would like to step away from that full-time gig, but they are requesting to still be subs for us. Um, and will stay with the district in that capacity, so we're thrilled with that. And then just another little note, actually, I should give a two-note here, um, Ellen Joseph has announced her retirement, um, for later in the school year, November 1st. Um, and that is an employee that has been instrumental in multiple locations in our district. Um, and has served the, the students of Fremont City Schools for many, many years, so she, she will be missed when, when her, uh, wonderful day comes, so we're excited for her.
I was gonna ask real quick, how many, do you know how many years off the top of your head?
I did not look it up, but I will, I will email you and let you know that, that number, it's.
Give me five minutes, I'll figure it out.
Okay, she'll get it while I'll, oh. Um, and then, and I don't typically shout out our resignations in this capacity, but, um, Adelaide Stover is another one of our res- uh, resignations and she's resigning her position in the district, um, from our custodial staff, and I, I think it's worth a nod. She is resigning that position so that she can continue her education to be a teacher. She has been working in the district and we've been supporting her along this path. And she has now gotten to the point in her education where she no longer can work during that timeframe because of her classes and her schooling and the amount of time that that will take for her. So soon, in a couple agendas, you will see her on our certified sub-list as she continues her education and gets that far.
Nice.
She just can't do the full-time work.
Right.
And go to school full-time to be that teacher, so just want to give her a little shout out, she's working really hard and we appreciate her. Item number three, um, I would ask that you consider the approval for some following appointments, and I do have a couple changes there, board. So, um, currently, Megan Bibler and Amy Purney both have asterisks on your agenda. Um, I would ask that we could remove those because all of their paperwork came through today. Um, and that we can hire them with full status. With that change, Megan Bibler will go to a step two at $42,590, so just a slight switch there, but we will make that, um, those adjustments. And item number four, you will begin to see, um, some of our substitutes from administrative substitutes to certified substitutes and also including our support staff substitutes. Um, and I would just simply share with our community that, uh, we have a place for any kind of substitute that you would like to be in our district and truly, truly, we cannot function, um, as a school district without these very, very important people filling these roles. Item number five, uh, that is one of our counselors and just ask for those extended days. Item number six, we have many supplemental contracts, beginning with Candace Fote and running all the way through Julia Zucker. And again, these are individuals that are adding on to their primary job of the day. And doing something above and beyond that benefits our students, so we're very thrilled with that. Item number seven, we continue that, uh, supplemental positions with John Hibbler to Amy Wensinger. Um, item number eight, I'd ask you to consider the approval of the special event, right, workers, beginning with Jay Bowers. And, um, for high school, running down to Matt Wilson. For middle school events, starting with Jen, Jennifer Hartman and running down through Krista Walker. And again, these individuals are those who keep our athletic events running. Um, we, we cannot function without these, these wonderful people. Item number 10 is the walk-on item that I would ask that you approve the athletic event workers payment charge that would coincide with those individuals. Oh, I think I skipped nine before I went to 10, sorry. Nine are just a few, uh, status changes in there and then to back to 10.
Can I get a motion to approve items two through 10, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second? Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion?
I just think it's important to note that all of the, like, special event workers, not all of them, some of those are like, people who don't necessarily work in the district per se.
Absolutely.
Like a lot of community volunteer, you know, type people, um, who just participate because they love the district and love, you know, the kiddos and the school and all the activities going on, so we, we definitely appreciate anybody who volunteers, but, um, certainly those, those individuals as well.
Yes, thank you.
Just one note for future reference, and I'm sure the esteemed Mr. Gorbets would agree with me that to start off the list of substitutes with the Mr. Randall Mako. Be the best foot forward, so anyway, sorry, Randy, I had to do that.
Darn alphabetical order.
Any other discussion on those?
Uh, Denise?
Yeah.
Could you just talk just for a minute about the role of the middle school faculty manager? Kind of what, what does that person do or what does that entail?
Certainly can.
Which item are you looking at?
Yes, are you an item?
Uh, six.
Six? Can you tell me where I wanted, I need to see the who?
Uh, four, four people down.
Oh.
Oh.
Ms. Buckley.
Thank you, yes, thank you, um. That individual here at the middle school, um, oversees all of the, has a piece of all of the athletic events, um, and all of the athletic teams here. Um, so we do not have a athletic director per se at this level, um, with our middle school. So that individual would serve in that role, so there would be scheduling aspects, there would be all of the equipment, all of the cloth, all of the uniforms that get handed out, returned, checked in.
Okay.
All of those pieces.
Yeah, that, that's all I needed to know, I, it, the, the definition faculty manager, I wasn't sure where that went based on the title of the position and.
Absolutely, um, and, and many times, some of those titles, um, have been around for many years and are tied into the contract and so don't get adjusted or updated.
That's fine, thank you.
And don't always match up to what we really think it should be now, um, and that's why I wanted to know the who I wanted to see, could make sure that I was speaking about the right spot. Absolutely.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. Uh, moving on to report of the treasurer.
Good evening. We are, I can't believe this, already closed out from July and moving into August. I don't know how we're one month into the new fiscal year already, I'm still back in March, I think. And then you will see an item on here tonight for an insurance, um, rate forgiveness and acceptance. That is our final item on the audit, it was very time-consuming, there was a lot of different parts to that one. And just to go a little bit more in-depth on that item, there was actually multiple people involved in this and oddly enough, both of those people are no longer with, A, the company that helped, um, implement ease and then B, also the person that worked for us in the district office. So we've made changes, uh, inside our finance department to make sure that this is not going to be happened again in the future and also, I had Marina go through and check everyone's rates from the past year and a half to make sure that in our next audit, we won't have this issue again. So we just feel like this would be the best way to move forward with that, um, error that the audit, state auditors found. And with all that shuffling of employees, we had to make sure there wasn't any repayments that went through a different, um, way or anything like that, so there was a lot of digging and looking and making sure we didn't miss anything, so this is our last thing and then we should be able to wrap up our audit, so. I just kind of wanted to highlight that the audits, this is our final thing, um, and then we can wrap that up. And then we are starting on our cash statements for the end of fiscal year 25 in the department. So that'll start our next audit and just to, um, talk a little bit more about Ellen Joseph, she started with the district in 1996 in the cafeteria, so, and.
Thank you for that.
It's nice when I can access my payroll system right from my device, so I can look at what her positions were. So she has been with us for quite some time, she is currently in the finance office of the middle school and she and I work very closely on a, if not weekly, monthly basis. Um, or every other week, more likely, so she's a great one to have around, she'll be deeply missed. But I'm sure that we'll find somebody amazing that she will teach all of her knowledge to. And that's my little Pollyanna dream world and we are just gonna go with it. And the other item on the agenda tonight is the authorization of the enterprise zone agreement that we would like to move into. It's, I, between Denise and I, after we met with Bob Gross from the city, we, I, they gave me some homework and I went through our other enterprise zone agreements and abatements and this matches pretty much standard what everybody else does, so I don't have any comes airy, we had attorneys look at it and all kinds of fun stuff and this is just very standard.
So when you say everybody else, you're talking about other school districts?
I looked at other school districts, I looked at other agreements in the district, it's, that we've had in the past, we don't currently have any quite like this. So we checked in a couple different areas, I checked with some other district treasurers. And also every year I go and sit on two different, um, committees that talk about abatements and enterprise zone agreements, so while I never have had to deal with this brand-new, I have, um, had experience with other entities and learning about that in these.
When you say similar, similar number of years and the amount.
Similar number of years, similar amounts, all of that, yep. Um, um, if you want to move forward, Mr. Price, with those approvals for those two items?
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, item number 11, that would be the enterprise zone agreement. If I can get a motion.
Okay, can I get a motion to prove item 11, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis, any discussion?
Do we have, is there anything? Do we have, is there anything Bob from the city wanted to add to our discussion?
No, I don't want to take up your time, but Megan hit the nail on the head. You know, when we expanded the CRA, we kind of shifted towards CRAs versus enterprise zone.
Mr. Gross, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Would you please come to the podium? Only that our viewers at home and those who are either watching now or watching later will be able to hear your response. Thank you.
Yeah, it's been a few years since we've done an enterprise zone agreement. We expanded the CRA and had utilized that. And then when we annexed this property and brought it in, instead of expanding our CRA, we expanded and used the enterprise zone, which is similar to the historically, the enterprise zones you probably approved when you were on city council. And so this just falls in line. It was really honestly easy to type up. I just, you know, found an old one and, oh, I just need to update this one and falls in line with what the city has traditionally done for decades.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
And then the item number 12 for the insurance rates.
Can I get a motion to approve item 12, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. Moving on to board member communications. I'll shuffle it up here. Laura?
Well, I thought I would debut this t-shirt tonight. It says, Friday nights and stadium lights. I'm ready. It's right on the horizon. I can smell it in the air.
August 22nd, come on.
So I came, I got it just in time. So at any rate, good luck Fremont football team. I hope you guys, what they bring home the trophy, but just go out there and play the game and give it your all. That's all we ask. Good luck, coaches, cheerleaders, band, volunteers, workers, everybody that's there. It takes a big production up there at the stadium. And I can't wait to be present and just be a part of it. So good luck, everybody. Fremont's rooting you on. Pepper rally is coming up. What is it next Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday. I'm getting my whole weeks mixed up this Wednesday. That's right, because we are in the middle of August already. Yep, this Wednesday. So yeah, there's a lot of fun things going on. So hope to see everybody around soon. But yeah, that's what I'm looking forward to. Football. Good luck, everybody.
Yeah, just kind of ditto to what Laura had shared there. And just good luck to all the sports teams that are out there. And, you know, we're coming up on that start of the school year. And I think we have one more meeting before the actual start. But sports start early and just wish them the luck. I guess I also wanted to just make a brief comment, not about the specific presentation that we had tonight with our visitors. I guess I just want our visitors, we encourage people to come. I just want to make sure that, you know, that our visitors understand that our working relationship with the superintendent is when she's dealing with those specific situations, that she's keeping us informed and that it's, you know, she's following the policies. But she's been very good about keeping us informed as to what's going on. And, you know, we appreciate that. But it also allows us to make sure that it still encourages people to come to share. I thought the, our visitor tonight did an excellent job of presenting her case. And, and, you know, I'm hoping the best outcome for that family. And, you know, and I guess the other part of it, you know, when she referred to the performing of the schools, you know, I guess from a board member perspective, I want to hope, and I want to believe that all of our schools have excellent administrators, excellent teachers, excellent custodians, you know, the whole, the whole gamut. And, you know, and I, I understand that there might be that feeling and, and stuff. But I guess I want to believe that they're all performing at a very high standard. And, you know, and again, my, my final comment is just, just wanted to assure people that that working relationship with the superintendent has been very good in keeping us informed and, you know, keeping our district and meeting the needs of our families. And, and again, I wish them the best in terms of that outcome. That's all I had.
Lori?
Well, school's right on the horizon. It's almost here. Some kids are going to be sad. And my grandson's excited. He loves it. And I did see the football players walk in and the one walk, just like I would shoes off in hand, trudge along. But I wish them all the luck and, and hope that they can, you know, battle it out and do their best at what they're, you know, at the game. And congratulations to Ellen on her retirement. Long time to be here, 29 years. And good luck to all the students as they're coming back and go to their open houses and meeting their teachers and seeing their new buildings or seeing their returning buildings.
Sarah?
Um, I would like to encourage all of our parents and families to make sure that you attend those open houses at all the district buildings. I think it's important as a parent to meet your teacher, your child's teacher, the building administrator. It's important to show your, your child how to access, you know, all those people in the building and just be familiar with, with the building that your child is going to be in. So I would definitely encourage parents to take that opportunity to attend open house as they come about. Kind of in a similar vein that Mr. Nally was talking about superintendent Hurt and how she relays information. I know sometimes when, when we have these pieces on the board agenda, it might seem like we just like make these decisions really quick. But our treasurer definitely with this zone agreement kept us in the loop, educated us, did all the work to make sure that we were making a good decision. So not just like, oh, this sounds great. But she kind of glossed over, we met with attorneys and did all the things. But those things are very important to keep a district safe and not enter into a poor agreement, but one that works not just for, you know, the other entity, but also for the district. So thank you for, for doing that work, Megan. I am super excited for school to start.
Come on, your kid, too, don't you?
Like, school never stopped for that kid. But like, it just, I love the, you know, the routine of, of things and getting back into the swing of things. I love seeing kiddos at school. Teachers are excited, you know, administrators are excited. It's just a, a great time of the year to get back into the swing of things. So enter into these things with open minds and open hearts. And, you know, everybody can give their best effort toward a successful school year. And good luck to all the sports teams. I know golf is also a great start. We have a lot of talented kids doing a lot of different things in this district. So we want to make sure that we support them all. And we'll see everybody at the community pep rally on Wednesday.
7:30 Wednesday night.
7:30 Wednesday night.
Right.
That's all.
All right. Kind of the same as everybody. Good luck to all of our sports teams, marching band, all the hard work you guys have been putting in this summer before school has started and now into it. And here we go. Can't wait to get out all those things. To Ellen Joseph, thank you for all the hard work over the years that you've put in and, and staying with this school district for this many years. So she's a friendly face when you come to the middle school. So she will be missed, but congratulations on your retirement. And to our students, school's right around the corner, but fair is beforehand. So enjoy the fair. Go out and enjoy it, but don't be that guy.
I should have said that.
Make the wise, I always tell my daughter, this is one of those moments where you have my full confidence in you. However, one little decision tonight could change that immensely. So enjoy the fair. It's fun. It's great to see friends and everything, but just, you know what you need to do and you know what you not, you shouldn't do. So just keep it at that. So.
Amen.
All the FFA students, too.
Yeah, all the hard work for the FFA students that are
A lot of students that participate.
Yeah, a lot of our students are there showing animals and stuff like that. So great time to go out and see a lot of our students putting in a lot of hard work, raising those animals or whatever it might be at the fair crafts or baked goods or whatever it is. So all that kind of stuff. So staff, my wife is ready. She's not, but school starts next Wednesday. I like it.
For staff.
For staff.
Staff are back next Wednesday, the 20th.
With that, no reason for executive session. So could I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved, meetings adjourned.